I haven't necessarily seen that in the other villages that have finance committees. So, I mean, I'm open to that. I just, I don't know if that's something that's standard practice. Is that standard practice?
I'm not sure what is standard in other, you know, other towns. What I would see as an advantage of is the, I'll call it informal nature, the groups get together as they can and help work on the budget. If we start making it a committee in the whole, then we end up with the scheduled meeting dates, the agendas, the minute taking, and the fact that my experience on zoning matters when we started out with seven commissioners and then adding the committee in the whole, adding the board members to it, nothing got done. It was too much input. So, keeping it short and simple as they say, I would propose that we start in that fashion with an open mind to adjust it for the next year after we see how this works out.
Mr. Mayor, are there any Open Meetings Act considerations to either the informal process that you recommend or the formal process that other villages would have?
I would have to defer to council. What I would, when I'm, as I said, I'm trying to facilitate the resident involvement with two people. And of course, potentially could involve two trustees, but I want to call it a committee commission. It's an advisory group to work with our finance team so that they can meet, they can meet here, they can meet wherever, whenever is the need. We have to go forward, but what concerns do we have to answer?
If it's a subsidiary, any type of formally recognized subsidiary of the board trustees, it would be subject to the Open Meetings Act and it would be required by the Open Meetings Act as far as posting notice to the meeting, posting agenda, taking minutes.
The informal process that the mayor suggested, would that be subject to the Open Meetings Act?
I believe if yes, if you're creating a finance committee type structure where you have set members, that would probably be subject to the Open Meetings Act.
And how about if you have two volunteers who are acting in advisory capacity? Would that still be subject to the Open Meetings Act? Or to a FOIA request or any type of, yeah, I guess my concern is that I'm all in favor of the idea. I think it's a wonderful idea and I think you could really use the input from our residents. But I'm concerned about creating a level of bureaucracy that all of a sudden exposes us to FOIA requests or other things that could bog down the process of trying to work collaboratively together to work on the budget. So, that's my concern.
Sure. FOIA is a little bit different from Open Meetings Act. Under the Freedom of Information Act, any documents that are prepared, once they become finalized into the budget, would be subject to the Open Meetings Act. Someone who requested access to those, preliminary drafts of the budget or anything like that, would be entitled to them once the budget becomes finalized. As far as Open Meetings Act goes, the act defines a public body as not only the board of trustees, but any subsidiary body that's created. So, again, you know, it doesn't require a state process, but once you've started following public officials, designated public officials, as well as designated residents, I think you're getting more to the level of a formal, even if you call it informal, I think you're getting to the level of a formal subsidiary body of the board of trustees, subject to the Open Meetings Act.
Would that be with one board member or two? I understand if it's more than two, but you're saying even one maybe?
It's, the issue of one or two board members has to do whether or not, if you have more than a majority of a forum, it would then be a meeting of the board of trustees that would then be, be noticed and have an agenda. But even if it was only one member of the board of trustees, even though you don't have a majority of the forum, it would be a subsidiary body, like a finance committee or any kind of subcommittee of the board. That generally is considered a public body under the Open Meetings Act and that does have to comply with the Open Meetings Act.
With the same apply of trustee Wittenberg and myself as the, if the public works, if we sat down with Frank and Ed and had a meeting with the same apply with the Open Meetings Act, issues might arise.
Well, if you just met with staff, two trustees meeting staff, there's no set meeting or anything, you just want to discuss the budget, that would not be subject to the Open Meetings Act because it's not considered a meeting. Where you set a specific meeting, you set a time where everyone's going to get together, that is generally creating a subsidiary, and you have a set membership. That's the other issue that creates a subsidiary body is where you have a set membership of a committee that becomes a subsidiary body of the board of trustees, which then is subject to the Open Meetings Act.
What I'm asking is if we say at 10 o'clock on Tuesday, we're going to meet with Frank and Ed and discuss the street program, or what streets are the worst streets in the village? Do we follow the Open Meetings Act?
No, not if it, because you don't have a set membership to a committee. I mean, today it could be trustee Wittenberg and yourself meeting with Frank on the budget. Tomorrow it could be trustee Hinchaw and trustee Walsh meeting with staff on the budget. So, you don't have a set committee structure that then is subject to the Open Meetings Act.
My question is, if we're both designated as the public works trustees, what would be the difference between us meeting with Frank and Ed and having an informal meeting and these people having this informal meeting? What would be the difference between the two?
I understand not so much just to discuss budgetary matters, but just do we need a new dump truck body?
Right. Do we need public works? Because usually we're set as public works trustees.
The liaison is supposed to be a standard act.
Again, because you haven't formed a committee, if you had formed a committee, a subcommittee of the board to speak with staff, then you're subject to the meetings. If you're speaking to staff just as a trustee, even if you have one other trustee with you, then you're not constituted a committee. You're still just acting as an individual trustee. You haven't had a number of present committee.
If we call this, if we don't call this budget thing a committee and it's just a couple of trustees?
Then we can do it. I think what you're saying is if it's an ad hoc, if it's an ad hoc committee, it's, if you, without a set agenda, it can be done. If it's a structured committee with a specific agenda, it can't.
Well, I think that the problem is if you're designating two members of the public to be with two members of staff and two members, two set members of trustees, I believe you're getting into the range of committee and creating a committee.
Well, and looking at some of the examples that I was bringing up, what they do is they have workshops. So, not to get on a tangent, because I know we don't want to tonight, but Western Springs has five committees and then they have workshops every three months standing on the calendar. And the workshops set agendas for the committees that want to have an agenda for the workshops. And I don't know any more about it than that, but I did look at their summaries and their agendas of their meetings. And they must have to do the workshops to get around creating the committees because they have a pension committee, a budget committee, finance and pension committee, place or safety public safety committees, similar to Mr. Walsh's assignment, that they do these workshops. And they're, it seems they're done every few months, just for your information. So, I, I think it's a great idea. I think it's in keeping with what we've been talking about. You've incorporated our PDA. My feeling is that we can try to do it in some way. I think we ought to try to do it. And if the only way we can do it is by having a committee in the whole, then I think we should try to do that sooner rather than later.
No, I misunderstand. I'm not suggesting you need a committee in the whole, but if you create a subcommittee of any form, you're typically then subjecting that subcommittee to the Open Meetings Act.
But that could, we can still do that though.
Why not?
Right? Because we can still put up a notice, but we could still publicly inform people on the meeting drafts.
Yes, you'd need a notice and an agenda and then you'd have to take notes.
Right. But we can still do it.
Oh, absolutely, you could do it. You just have to file an Open Meetings.
Set it up.
Can I ask a question? What if, what if the two trustees weren't part of it? And maybe Dave and I just met with them periodically over what me and Dave and the two residents were talking about? Is it still a committee? Say it's just me, Dave, and two residents.
Well, if the two residents are designated.
Designated, so that's the key.
So, it sounds like that if we are going to designate two residents, we're going to have to follow the Open Meetings Act. Which is fine. And then we'll just make sure that we follow the rules appropriately, which is, it creates another level of bureaucracy, but it's something that we can't alter. But that's fine.
Is it possible, Rich, for you to research if there's any? Is there any way? This, this doesn't sound good, but I think I articulated at the beginning my proposal, what I'm trying to accomplish here. There's issues, you know, are the two residents going to be, our staff is here during the day? Are the residents, the ones that aren't working, they'll be available to come? What if they have meetings every third Wednesday at 1:00 P.M.? We have an open meeting, you know, and then an agenda and minutes and that, but it's going to be here when the staff is here.
Right.
And I don't know how that works into people's schedules in the village. So, I was wondering. To me, that's what it seems like we're trying to, it's an Enron, Enron Open Meetings Act for the, I hope, agreeable legitimate purpose of facilitating resident input to work with finance people on village finance in particular.
Well, your question is, can you have an open meeting at 1:00 P.M. in the afternoon? The answer is yes. You don't have to have it just in the evening.
Is, is it possible, do you think, with, to look at maybe some other towns outside the meeting area, what they're doing in terms of, in fact, I can contact the West Central Municipal Conference and ask them if they can get some input from the member communities as to what their setup is.
Sure.
We can, you know, we can bring that back for the September meeting then, you know.
And we'll be, I can go look at the Western Springs, so I'll be glad to reach out and just ask for information from them, if they can wind it up for us, whatever is appropriate.
What's, Mr. Trustee Hinchaw?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea and I think even with the Open Meetings, I think, again, it's good. I think we have some great firepower in the community. I look out and I see Tom out here. So, I would suggest maybe we look at three. I think 12 is too many. I think if you have more than two, if Tom is traveling, maybe the other two could, you know, do the work. And I think with the recent discussion we had on bond, I don't know if that counted as budget, but to me, that's a great thing for the finance committee to work on, somebody who has dealt with that day in and day out in their financial job, you know, as a community resident. So, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea.
Well, what I would suggest that we do is we continue, I would entertain a motion to continue the discussion regarding the resident participation of those finances to the September meeting to allow time for me to get input in the West Central Municipal Conferences to how other towns go and input from the trustees as to their feelings and preference on, okay with then going to some kind of, well, it would be regimented in the sense that it would require a posting of an agenda in advance, having set meetings and preparing minutes. Wait back and see for the input.
Let's give it my thumb up.
I'm fine with that, what you guys said. I don't know about the others.
Okay. Motion to continue the discussion on this matter to get to the September board meeting and entertain a motion. Second by trustee Alachlan. All of your signatures by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, and your chair, the ayes have it, it's continued through September. I think you can understand the dynamic we're trying to, but. If possible, I have it on here, the next item is the budget calendar discussion and some budget calendar that trustee Burke had shared with Frank and myself, and I believe this is from the Burr Ridge, Village Burr Ridge, and it's contained in their budget online. The suggestion that trustee Wittenberg had was that we create a budget calendar of a more formal nature, which, I know I don't have copies for you folks, but it's, it is online at the Burr Ridge site if you want to go look for it. But just, it's one page, it's a budget calendar, and the left-hand column is different dates, the right-hand column is the action. And this one is from 2011 to 2012, but it starts November 14, 2011, presentation consideration of the 2011 tax levy. It goes to the next date, which is notice, official notice of the public hearing. And then the next item is the public hearing of it and on the same day as the public hearing, which now we're up to December, a month later, the board of trustees adopts the 2011 tax levy. Then it goes through items, budget manual distributed to department heads, department heads' libelists of goals and objectives to the village administrator, finance director, village administrator, review fiscal year 2012, 2013 revenue estimates, and so forth, including village administrator and finance director, working on it, preparing the budget message, distributing it to the trustees in March of 2012, and final action after a public hearing on April 9. So, my, my personal experience and I think the trustees that have been on the, on the board prior to this year, we, we have this budget internalized, it's, it's part of the clock. And we know we have to go through this process, and we know when it is, and we know that, you know, whether we hit that date or it's a little bit earlier or a little bit later, we know the deadlines that are required, and we get it done. The problem is, is you folks don't know that, partly because you don't have it available to you and you don't have to work on it. That's what the board has to do. So, I'm not opposed to, in fact, in favor, I think it's a good idea. We can create that and I would expect that Dave and Frank can work on it, preparing a budget calendar. And we could take a look at it and if there are things that trustees feel should be added or taken out before we finalize a budget calendar. Apparently, this budget calendar, once it's been created, it's, this is 2011 to 2012. The one from 2012 to 2013 is the same thing, except the dates change as that calendar changes. And I bet if we look back in time, we would find it the same way. And in the future, we can say until we change what the actions are, the only thing we change are the dates. But it's something that is doable and we can put it online and that would provide more information to the people. So, trustees, discussion or input, where I'm going with this is I would entertain a motion to direct Frank and Dave Brink to prepare a tentative budget calendar for our review at a future meeting, and if we can get it together, then we can then get our own suggestions to it, perhaps, and then finalize it and have this in place. I think our tax levy is passed in December as well, so we could probably have a calendar that would be similar to this and starting about the same time. So, I will start with, I see trustee Hinchaw is in, so go ahead.
Thank you, Rich. If I'm understanding it right, this gives about a month from this calendar, and I'm sorry you guys can't see this, but from March 2nd to April 9th, from when the board gets the proposed budget to when we would be approving that. So, that's about a month, if I'm following along correctly. So, I'd ask that we look to get more time, kind of woven into that is there's one public hearing and that would be on Monday, April 9th on this calendar. So, we give the community one chance to ask questions about the budget and I would love to get at least two, in case somebody can't make the one. So, I don't know if that just means pushing it a month. We did it in, I think, July of this year, this is April, but if we did it in May, you know, I don't know what the right answer is, but I would seek a little bit longer window.
And that's fine with me. I, I would support that. I inherited the process that we had followed and we have been late. There's no reason, absent some exigent circumstances we had this year, that we should try to at least have the budget in place. By the time the fiscal year starts, certainly, you know, depending on circumstances, at least that made board meeting right after the fiscal year starts. And I would agree that we should have more time with the trustees to work on it, unlike Burr Ridge, which is quite a bit bigger and they have, they have five people in house that, as I read this, that work on it, whereas we have two, two residents. If we can figure that out and our two trustees, we beat them by one person. We could come up with something. But I think trustee Wittenberg's suggestion here, and she's not saying that we do it this way.
Right. It's a framework.
This is just a framework, this is just a sample. I tried to find one for Willow Springs because Willow Springs, residence-wise, is like us and couldn't find it online. Look, may not be there, but, you know, I would suggest that we just generally direct Frank and Dave to prepare a budget calendar. How they do it, I leave to their own device. It occurs to me that we, you know, if we sit down, we have to ask those questions of, you know, what actions do we take along the way? What actions would we like to see, as trustee Hinchaw pointed out? And figure out a timeframe that's workable from administrative resource. And we, and we know what the meeting calendar is and we assign dates to try to get these done. The notice dates in here are not like the levy ordinance is, that's a requirement by law and we have to publish it by a certain date. So, once, once we know when our December board meeting is where we have the levy ordinance and the public hearing on it, we back that up, we know what the date is automatically for notice and factor that in. Anyway, any other input from the trustees?
I would just note, you've got two dates on this proposed budget here for this, on March 12th, March 26th, excuse me, March 26th. And I know trustee Hinchaw talked about public hearings or whatever you want to call it. I would assume if you're having a, all the trustees are getting together with the department, that's an open meeting. You have, yeah, the publics might, might have come to that.
Correct.
So, I don't, whatever you might call it, you can call it a workshop or a public hearing, they are built in directly into this calendar.
I do have one other comment. I talked to a director at Illinois Municipal League and he said there is some advantage to waiting until approval in your ordinance closer to the end, in that if there's changes in the revenue stream, you can try to factor those into your budget. So, I don't know the right answer, I'll say I'm the new guy again, but, you know, I think somewhere between this April and July, I'd be okay with it.
With the requirements that we have to follow, which we just did in July for the appropriation ordinance, required that we deal with in the first 90 days of the fiscal year, if we pass our budget in April theoretically, our May meeting, we could pass it. But for the reason that you just stated, we don't want to do that because then we're going back and amending it if a revenue stream change happens, something like that. And we'll work on, for example, we'll work on a calendar, I believe, the, the way to do that is whether it's pass that date or may, may be in, I still think that that calendar should say July, the July meeting is when the appropriations ordinance is.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a continuation to this. It seems to me only have the one date.
If it doesn't, if they don't stay, they might be under the budget. That might be why they say public hearing for budget. We're under appropriations.
You would still do it at the end, because why not do it at the end?
Right.
Because there's, you have that time to take.
We have until July 31st to pass it and file it, so we stick with the July meeting for the appropriations ordinance. The budget could be passed in April, in May, whenever, but even if it was passed and we did nothing, it wouldn't be until the July meeting that we do the appropriations ordinance, just for the reason you just stated. If something came up and we wanted to amend the budget, budget is something we can do because that's our internal tool. We follow appropriations ordinance. I believe Burr Ridge may follow the budget style.
I'll amend mine to say I'll follow your recommendation.
I think the way we do it, Tom, your input, it makes sense to look at it from the standpoint of doing appropriations, even though, since we don't have to do the budget and we just use it as a tool, and as you know from this year, we base appropriations on the budget, I think we still can get the budget done earlier. Is that something, you know, we can do on our own and modify if we need to or whatever? And then perhaps by the July meeting being in a position where it's really pretty much straightforward, we passed appropriations ordinance, we know why and how we got there, and yet we've had that three months to look at possibly new revenue. Somebody won the Power Ball and wanted to donate, you know, a few million bucks to the village, so.
Thanks, man.
Then, let me do it this way. The chair would entertain a motion to direct village administrator Alonso and Dave Brink to prepare a budget calendar as soon as possible. If you don't want to put it down, you've got stuff building up for September, but for further consideration.
I make that motion.
Motion by trustee Hinchaw, second by trustee Alachlan. All favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, the ayes have it, that motion carries. Last item is the Timber Trails impact fee earmark discussion. At the July meeting, I announced and pleased to announce the check for $7,000 from Timber Trails for the impact fee as down payment on their commitment to pay us the $200,000 they still owe going back to the initial $500,000 that, that agreed to pay us. And I, at that time, I said that if it was up to me, we'll take all the impact fee money and put it in a fund and call it money for the street maintenance program. That alone is not my decision to make, it's a board policy decision. So, I'd like to have this discussion, if possible, if council tell me if we need something more formal, but just what I would like to do here is ultimately reach agreement wherein we direct the finance team to take all of the, as we receive them, impact fee payments, put them in a separate account and of course, maintain the accounting form and designate that money to be used for future, over time as it builds up, street maintenance, absent approval by the board or some type of exigent circumstance that arises that might cause us to have to divest to that money. So, I don't want to tie our hands and say, no, never, we, we won't use it for anything else because I don't have the crystal ball. But I would like to at least start out with nothing more than our good intention to take that money, to put it to one area where we really need $200,000 at one time, even if we got it, you know, what if they decided next month out of generosity of their hearts, here's the check for the balance, now we have it, what do we do with it? I would use it for streets. It's not enough to hire another officer over a 30-year period of time. But comments from the trustees, just input?
If this money is coming in little bits and pieces, I mean, we can still have a street fund out of it. It's going to be, even if you replace and repair streets, there's going to be minor repairs within a year, I mean, where you might need $6,000 or $15,000, something like that, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good point. What I see, I personally envision it as we accumulate it, if not all of it, at least a substantial amount of it, and then use it to spend on something. The thing that concerns me about using it, although I wouldn't be opposed to it if it's something that was necessary, if you spend $12,000 for crack filling and $15,000 on something else, as the money is coming in, we accomplish a lot of little things and we address them, but the street still is in disrepair and we need to go forward to. And we need to go forward to, to repave it, which is what we're dealing with right now. And I'll leave this open. Trustee Wittenberg, trustee Bailey, and Frank and Ed are working on the street maintenance program. Got that coming, so we'll.